Trustee or tip wizard Florida.
I didn't know you were Ronald Reagan. And it's coming back.
Showing your age.
I have an old construction.
Trustee or vomit?
Guy who talks to construction contracting, that was his, trust was verified.
I, I think Reagan was the first president to use that public thing.
Yeah, it was about the same time. Early nineties.
Huh?
Hey Doug. So tip's been traveling the floor of comeback. So we have him come back to work or do we have him take part?
Um.
So.
I, 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 well. I think the latest, well, we'll have to see, but I think the latest was. You're coming, if you're not coming from a level three area, you're probably okay. You don't have, if you're coming from a level three area. Self, I think they're level two like the rest of us. The rest of the country is level two.
Okay.
I mean, we, if he wants to, he can call a document.
It's his coworker.
It's his coworker asking.
Yes.
Well, I don't mean.
I will.
I mean, we can check the CDC guidance or ask Sean.
Okay, I'll call the meeting to order. This is the work session of the Pat Township Board's supervisors. Our chair, Ms. Whitman, is out of town, but she's participating remotely by phone. Say hello, Betsy.
Hello, everybody.
Thank you. So item two on the agenda is presentation by the township manager, who will advise the board on local matters related to the COVID-19 pandemic.
Yeah, thank you, Dan. When I started scheduling this last week, I didn't think we'd be quite this deep into what we're into right now. But I still wanted to get the board together, especially if you had questions for Sean, and just walk you through what we're doing now, why we're doing it, and how we're going to do it. And with that, I'm going to ask Sean to come up and start and just give you a little bit of, you know, why, why are we doing, what, you know, why do we do emergency declarations and what does that mean? And then he'll roll into how he, what Sean does as part of his job.
Well, welcome. Yeah, I never thought we'd be where we're at either at this point in time. So it's been a busy few days. The disaster declaration that we did last Friday, Elliot, as the chair of COG, is the authorized party to make that declaration with action from the executive director on the recommendation of emergency management. So that's how we got to where we were on Friday. And then Monday during your special meeting of the general forum, you ratified that act by saying yes, that was prudent. Obviously, though, if we go all the way back to the World Health Organization's Declaration of Emergency to the federal national emergency, to the governor's Declaration of Emergency, counties and then local level. We've always tried to be very proactive with disaster declarations, even if we felt they maybe weren't 100% necessary. It doesn't cost you anything to declare a disaster, but it can cost you if you don't in terms of possibly not being prepared enough for the particular emergency. It allows you as a municipality through your agreements with the COG to be part of whatever is necessary to take care of this emergency. The first thing that we have done in a long time, and Doug and some other folks from the manager's side authorized the approval of $15,000 out of our emergency contingency fund to grant funds to Meals on Wheels to support meals for our high-risk residents for the, it's about the next month. That's about what $15,000 does for them. But one of their urgencies was, and the reason they made that request was that they want to be able to prepare ahead, freeze meals, so that if people aren't able to prepare those meals in the near future, they have them and are available to distribute them. And we don't have that high-risk population without food for a period of time. So we felt that that was a life safety issue, so we took it to the next step of using emergency contingency funds for that. Back to the declaration, it allows you purchasing, a little purchasing latitude, things like that. You can't go out and buy a Cadillac if a Ford will do you, but you need to, you may not need to have to go through all the quotes and bidding processes and so forth. For purchasing, it allows us access to that emergency funds, things like that. On a local level, your control of your ordinances and codes can allow you some flexibility there if needed to help mitigate whatever the emergency is. And like I've told many groups, I'm really good at fires and floods and things like that. This is really different for us. Now, we've, we've dealt with H1N1, we've dealt with some other stuff, but this one's a lot bigger. Certainly has a lot more impact on.
Yeah, usually our disasters, our emergencies start local and we, we try to push them up so we can get reimbursement money. This one has started.
Yeah, internationally.
Internationally and has come down to our local level, so. It's a little bit different animal. And it's being handled a little bit differently than it would if we were, if we were the ones in charge of the emergency.
Right, and so that makes it different. And I had an email with Furs and Township just this morning, because they were asking about procedural things for, you know, if we are able to recover any funds through the presidential declaration, you know, what should we do? And I said, well, because we don't know, every presidential declaration, the funding is slightly different. The only thing it's about the same is it's usually a 75 to 25% match. So worst-case scenario, you know, we laid out some funds and we get zero back. Best-case scenario, we get 75% of that money back. But right now, they're only authorizing emergency preparedness measures, which is a category of disaster relief. And that, that particular type of relief goes toward things like public safety, you know, law enforcement costs, emergency response costs. When we get to the point where we're filing for application, we're going to try to recover the money we put forth to Meals on Wheels, you know, maybe, maybe not get it back. But if there are more costs associated with this, like overtime and things like that, certainly we'll try to roll those up and make that part of our Declaration of Disaster Recovery Funding. So that's kind of, that's the long game. We don't have to worry about that right now. On the, on the kind of the short game, my role was, as emergency management coordinator, is trying to keep all our groups coordinated in the name. I'm not the emergency management commander, I'm the coordinator. So I'm not in charge of this, I'm not the expert, but we try to keep those that are in the loop, those that are our partners, whether it's the other municipalities or other agencies outside. We try to coordinate that effort. One of our biggest partnerships, obviously, is with Penn State. Our emergency operations plan is a joint plan with them, so we have a partnership there. But right now, we're working heavily with Mountain City Medical Center and with State College Area School District and a couple other groups here and there. Like I said, Meals on Wheels was, was a new partner as of right now. So that's kind of what I'm doing in my role right now, is coordinate those efforts, making sure that our groups are meeting, that we're having discussions. I know I have a Zoom meeting with the chief of police here in coming days. So those type of efforts, we're making sure that everybody's on the same page. From the standpoint of emergency services right now, we don't have any major unmet needs. Everybody's providing services as, as normal, as normal can be. We are coordinating some efforts in terms of how we respond to different types of emergencies, the personal protective equipment that we wear and utilize for that so that we don't run out, and do we have backup if we, if we do need that? And so we're working on those kind of things. The, one of the things that just came up today was the announcement from Penn State that they were going to extend their online learning to the end of the semester. For us, you would think, well, not a major impact. But for the fire department, 30% of their staffing is volunteers, they're students. So if they don't stay in the area, we could lose some staffing. EMS is supported by a lot of volunteers, some of those are also student staffing. So we will in the next hours be, you know, reaching out to try to determine, you know, what that staffing level is going to look like. From the police side, most of the municipal departments are not in a crisis right now in terms of staffing, but obviously if people start becoming sick, we would have to, to manage that as well. So those are some of the things that we want to look at. I did just come from some brand-new information, Doug probably just received it too, that Advanced Disposal, one of our major partners in terms of trash pickup, put out a letter saying that there's a potential for service disruption, you know, if their staff becomes ill, just like everybody else. But we need to start doing some contingency planning around that. You've seen in the past when the New York City trash haulers go on strike, you know, how, how that can impact. Well, for us in Central PA, we wouldn't think of that as a major impact, but in something like this, it could be. So that's, those are some things that we're doing. So we're, we're acting on these things, trying to come up with contingency plans to make sure that as we move forward, we're on the same page in the region and have kind of plans of what we would do just in case. And I say just in case, you know, I never would have thought we'd be where we're at today a month ago. I would have said, no, there's no way you're canceling all the sports and you're not going to have classes over a virus. And we did. So never say never when it comes to any of this that we're doing, please keep that in mind. From the standpoint of the township managers, obviously, they are part of what we call Emergency Management Council. So they are my direct supervisors when it comes to this type of emergency. So while day-to-day I report to Steve Baer through the fire program, during this crisis, I'm reporting to Doug and the other managers. So if there are issues, if there's concerns from the community, questions that you have people asking or things that you want to be answered, please go through Doug so he can get them to me and we can get them vetted out to the appropriate parties and then back to you as quickly as possible. Go ahead, Elliot.
I don't know if you were still there yesterday, but the COG exec committee authorized money for feeding the volunteers lunch.
Right, so what Elliot's talking about is, we talked about some additional funding from probably the fire budget or something, just to put forth to feed volunteers while they're in the buildings. So today, at lunchtime, there was, I think, a dozen volunteers on staff, so we fed them at the firehouse. You know, and different people pay for that sometimes. Today it came out of the fire company budget, some it's going to come out of the COG budget, but we're going to help share some of that. And the other benefit from that is we are only buying stuff from local businesses. So we're trying to keep some people afloat that are really busy right now. Specifically caterers who don't have a lot of meetings to cater, don't have a lot of parties to cater. We're working with that. And then also the, some of the local businesses that normally, you know, provide lunches that aren't, aren't going to be open because of this. So there's a, there's a benefit both ways for that particular action. But yeah, thank you, Elliot, for reminding me about that. So, but you know, when there's that information flow, please get it up to the managers so the managers can get it to the appropriate people, and then we can get it back to you to provide the vetted information back to the community, just trying to be on, on one page for that.
So let me just.
Go ahead.
Then the other part of my role is then managing the township staff and how we respond to this. So we've been, the four of us have been meeting about every other day now. We started last week with contingency planning on, you know, anticipating that we're going to be, have reduced staff at some point in the future. But we still need to continue to provide our essential services. Those are the ones that, you know, are really focused at health and safety. Primarily police, so Tyler has, has developed a written plan for what happens when we start getting short-staffed. We'll take what, we'll, you know, if we have to, we'll go 12-hour shifts is really where we'll end up going. We'll also work with the other agencies around here. We have great mutual aid between all the police departments. So we have a plan in place, public works, you know, our essential, our essential duties there. Our, our end of the trash pickup is brush and leave, so we will continue to do that. That's, that's an essential service around here, and especially if everybody's going to be home.
They're going to be cleaning up their yard, so.
We will continue to do, and then it's the safety issues related to roads and highways and traffic signals and signs. So we need to have somebody available, you know, really at all times that can go out and, and handle those things and correct any safety issues that have to be. So, so we're, we're, we're taking steps to, to put those things in place when we need to. Right now, I have asked each of the department heads to give me a, a daily report on their employees, you know, who's at work, who's off sick, who's off sick. You know, right now, we don't have anybody under COVID-19 isolation or anything, and we're more or less, everybody's working right now. But I've asked them to give me a daily update so we can track those, we can track, if we start seeing a trend, we could track that. See, the other things, I, I think I've been, I've been providing you at least a daily update. I don't think I got around to that today, so this will be the daily update. Really, nothing, nothing significantly changed except what Sean said. And I hadn't had a chance to read the, the advanced disposal thing yet.
Hot off the presses.
Yeah, hot off the presses, so. I, I will continue to provide you those updates. Like I said, we've, we've restricted access to just the, an area of the lobby in there. You can get in the doors and get to the reception desk and the police window, but that's about it. Other than that, we've got a couple of people working from home. Other people, we've told them if they get to the point where they have to self-isolate or stay home, we'll work with them to be able to work from home. And we've told people, obviously, that if they have to take care of children or the other dependents, that we will work with them and make sure everybody's provided enough sick leave to undertake that. So those are the things we're doing locally. I don't know if anybody's got questions over those issues at this point.
Two other things real quick, I forgot, but State College School District, obviously one of our partners. They're, they're not going to be in class till at least the 30th, and again, that may change as well. But they are doing remote feeding, or they're providing meals for individuals that need it. They announced yesterday they've done already 350-plus meals, so they're actively doing that. They also have a team that's working on remote learning so that they have the ability to push out classes if they are extended in terms of their ability, or their ability not to be in, in the classroom. So they're working very hard on that. And then the Mountain City Medical Center, as one of our partners, is, is just made a few changes in the last days. Otherwise, their services are relatively uninterrupted, but their visitor status, they're making changes on who they're allowing to come in and visit, and some of their routine stuff is being canceled. But normal emergency department operations are in place and things like that. So if you need to use the hospital, it's there for you. And we've been working with them in terms of, you know, how they're going to go about making changes if need be, specifically around emergency department services and trying to keep people separated that are, you know, trauma patients versus people who are ill. You don't want to mix the two in time like this, so they're working on those plans, and we'll keep up to date on that as well. But those, those two services that aren't necessarily COG, I'm going to give you a little update on.
The next item was the elected officials' role.
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, so, and like I said, from the standpoint of Pat Township, Elliot being the chair of COG has a little bit more of a role in that disaster declarations, but he's exercised those already. So the only time we would really need additional guidance there is if we move into a activation level with our emergency operations center where we're staffed on a regular basis, we would maybe need a representative in, but that's very rare. We are in right now what we call activation level three, which is just monitoring what's going on. EM staff, yesterday I was in the EOC for a while, just setting things up, but I'm not, we're not staffing that building right now because we don't have a lot of staff, so we don't want to wear our staff out, and we don't need to be there. So we're doing things virtually and remotely, monitoring the conditions. Certain triggers, like I spoke about earlier, you know, if we all of a sudden have staffing issues or, or trash hauling issues or, you know, whatever it be, then we would come, we gear up our EOC to the next level, level two, where we partially activate those necessary departments to help support that EOC. As elected officials, your role is just to support your municipalities at this time, be that conduit to your residents, and getting that information to Doug like I described before. But in terms of actual authority or direction, in, in this given time, once we've declared an emergency, it comes through the managers, and that comes through the elected officials to the managers. And it's just the system that we set up to allow, because you can imagine with six municipalities and 32 elected officials, it'd be like herding cats, you know? So really, the thing is keep an open dialogue with your managers and making sure that we don't have any stones unturned. So if there's something that you see in your, especially in your municipality, that you, that you're concerned about, that we get that information to the managers and back to you.
And you also have on here a speaking or messaging with one voice.
Right, and that's really important. So right now, we have a joint information system in play where the university, the municipalities, the hospital, school district, we're trying to get all our messaging on. So we're on the same page. Now, obviously, everybody has a little bit different information needs to be shared, but we're trying right now to use the State College Burrows website as our conduit, linking everybody to that page. So we're focusing that as one, one location for people to go to. So if you do have, you know, you have your own website, if the, you know, we can get on your website, a COVID-19 information, boom, and it links to the State College website. They offered, they have full-time staff working just on that, and it's so far working pretty well. So if there's a link or there's information that you really want to have added to that, we can do that. Doug knows how to, how to go through that process. We just get it to the person running that particular site. And then also, when we come to the point where we need to do press releases, we'll have each of the managers, you know, approve that. If there's something in there they think needs to come back to elected officials, they would do that as well. Right now, probably not a lot of information that's not being pushed to us from the state level, but at some point in time, maybe there's something we wanted to push out from the local level, especially if we started opening shelters or opening feeding centers or things like that. That would be kind of information that we'd push from the bottom up. But right now, we're kind of status quo. Fortunately, you know, knock on wood, that we stay that way, but I've told all the other groups, this is going to be a marathon, not a sprint. Our goal, the strategic goal, is to flatten the curve. You've probably seen that in the media. We're trying to keep from having a spike that overwhelms our healthcare system. And as long as we're doing what we're doing, we will flatten that curve. But the flatter we make that curve, the longer this is going to last, meaning that, you know, there's going to be virus out there, people are going to have infections, but we hopefully will keep that to a manageable number. I want people to avoid what I'm going to call COVID fatigue, meaning that, oh, you know, it hasn't happened to me, and next thing you know, we have a, an outbreak again. That may be this summer, that could be this fall, whenever it would be, we want to kind of just keep this on in manageable. You know, whether we get people back to school or back to college or whatever it might be, we still have to manage this for a long period of time, especially till a vaccine is, is available. So that's, that's kind of the hard part.
We want to point people towards reliable, trusted sources.
Exactly, yeah.
So whether that's the State College Borough website or CDC. I think in terms of what's happening in Pennsylvania, the PA Department of Health is the point.
Right.
Agency. And if, they're going to be the ones who are going to make the, the announcements of where the new cases are popping up. So, you know, people are wondering about what's going on in Senator County, really pointing back towards the PA Department of Health. And until they say there's a confirmed case, there's really no confirmed case. So it's probably important, more so than ever, that we make sure that we're giving people vetted information. So if you're not sure, contact me, I'll get to, I'll get to Sean and we'll, we'll close that. I mean, we'll, we'll circle back and close the gap.
On the humorous level, we saw what happened when somebody said buy toilet paper, right? So, and that, you know, that, that's the kind of thing we want to try to avoid, so.
You know, and if people, you know, if you hear the, you know, well, what about this? Well, just, you know, send them back to the CDC. And, you know, we just had a question come up about somebody traveling up from Florida, getting back from vacation, do they need to self-isolate? Well, the current guidance is no. If you're not seeing any, if you don't have any symptoms, you haven't had known close contact with an infected person, then you're, you're, you're okay, you're no better than the rest of us.
Exactly, yeah. We want our well people working.
Yeah, so, you know, and that's. Yeah. So, you know, and that's, you know, the message to the employees is, you know, take the time you need to take care of you and your family, but we need you back when you're healthy and when everything's good. So, you know, we all may take a turn here with our two weeks, so. But it's going to take a group effort to keep it going over the, as Sean said, the marathon.
Board have any comments or questions?
No, I think Betsy says.
Betsy?
Betsy?
Yeah, I actually sent a text to Jessica in the pan. I don't know how well you can understand me. Do you understand me well?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Yeah, we can hear you.
I noticed electronic sign boards on, of course, all the major highways that I was traveling from Pennsylvania to Massachusetts, saying very briefly, for infection, COVID-19, go to, and it was the PA State Department or New Jersey or whatever. People who don't commute on major highways are not going to see those. I'm suggesting, wondering if we could have a couple of those set up around State College, similar to what we had last year with the traffic diversion away from North Attletown. I sense that there is a lot of, it's not in my backyard yet mentality. I'm not pointing any fingers. I think it's simply human behavior, but those message lines, when I saw them again and again and again, really drove home to me, once again, this is a very real phenomenon, but I think there are a lot of people who are still, you know, at varying steps towards the acceptance of this and the practice of preventing further spread.
So Betsy, the messaging on the sign boards is a PennDOT activity, obviously in conjunction with Pima and the other, and Department of Health. I'll double-check with my contacts to make sure that all regions are doing the same messaging on PennDOT signs, because it sounds like maybe on the eastern side of the state, they maybe were doing something and they're not doing something in our area. So I haven't seen anything here.
I haven't noticed anything here, but, I mean, yeah, if you can run that up.
I'll run that up the chain, just to make sure that we're doing that on a statewide level, not just certain regions. And then from the standpoint of locally, I know we just coordinated some message boards for the hospital. Maybe we can get the municipalities, if they have extra message boards, to put out that kind of information, but.
I really think that would be very powerful, and I think the content of the message is not as critical as the message itself.
Right. We want to drive them to the right source. So you said each of them took them to the State Department of Health?
Yes, of course, the right source. But, yeah, I think just the presence of the message board is really critical.
Go ahead, Elliot.
Speaking of our message board on the, speaking of our, if I go close to this is a problem, and if I go farther away, it's a problem. Anyway, we have, we'll have announcements on our site, but should we automatically copy the Burrows newest announcements, or should we be sending people to their site?
I think we'll send them. Going to the Borough website's one of the choices after you go, we have a Corona page.
Right.
That's a link from the homepage, and, you know, they can go to the Borough or they can go to the CDC. I think there's three or four sources, CDC, PA Health, and the Borough up on ours, but I'll check that.
I had a thought. Betsy's comment has to do with getting this message out to the public more broadly than just highway signs, especially locally. I wonder if it's possible to ask the businesses that are still open, like grocery stores and drugstores, if they, if you have a, if you print out a flyer they could take to their entrance door with that information for COVID-19 information, with a website and a phone number, so people can copy it down.
And all great ideas, and we're kind of at the very beginning of our alerting and notification of this, because again, it came down from above. Usually, we're the ones that are first ones letting people know. So in terms of the messaging, we have lots of different methods to do that, and that's certainly a good idea. One of the things that we've found is that a lot of our departments, because of their lack of, I want to say, you know, ability to do like inspections, the rental housing inspection group has been shut down for a little bit. You know, maybe there's staff available that we could do, you know, they could be running these around to businesses and handing them out. So that, you gave me a great idea, you know, to be able to utilize some staff that aren't necessarily right now engaged in their normal operations from the region side. So I'll take that.
They're also talking in some of the big cities about running out of hospital beds, and we're nowhere near that problem. But if worse came to worse, we should know what our capacities are and how we can possibly ramp up if necessary.
Yeah. So yesterday we had, yesterday and the day before, we had several communications with Mount Ninni Medical Center, and I talked about this once before. They have an all-hazard plan, whether it's a bus crash on the interstate or infectious disease, and it's really hard for them to share all those details. But I reinforced to them yesterday that there's a lot of people asking that question. So they were working, because those came up at the Borough Council as well, those questions. They were working to figure out a way the best to share that information and not get into the weeds, you know, in terms of what's available. Like, I think that on a national level, the president was asked about how many ventilators we have. Well, he's never going to know that, you know, information. The answer is not enough possibly, depending on how well we flatten the curve. If we flatten the curve, we have plenty. So when you think about the same thing with Mount Ninni Medical Center, if we do a good job locally, you know, meaning within Central County and the general area of keeping that curve flat, then yeah, we have plenty of space. But if we don't, then possibly not. So it's, I can't give you a real good answer, and I don't want to say, well, there's X number of beds available. They can tell you that. But what system they would put in place to extend that, there's different levels of that. Bringing in inflatable hospitals, I know we've tested that in the last.
But they do have plans.
Yeah, they have plans in place, but I can't tell you, you know, which ones they would use over another one based on, you know, until we had come to that area.
People just need to be reassured or assured that those plans are there, rather than we'll answer it when it's too late.
Right.
Yes?
What's the status of testing?
So, everybody locally does sampling, okay? Nobody locally does testing. All tests get sent to Exton PA at the state lab or one of the two commercial labs, Questor Concord, I think's the name of it, that do commercial testing. So there's basically three avenues for testing. That's why some of the presumed positives aren't positive until the CDC gets a hold of those things and so forth. So those particular tests get sent out. And there's also, they wanted us to stress that there's criteria for testing. So where you see on TV, maybe the people pulling up and they're taking swabs in their car, we're not doing that here. We're not testing the well or asymptomatic that haven't had contact with somebody else, haven't been out of the country. So if you just, or if I'm well today and I walk up to Mount Ninni and say I want tested, they're going to screen me, and if I don't meet the criteria, they're not going to test me, or they're not going to take my sample and send it for testing. So they wanted us to stress that, that there is criteria for that. You know, right now, on the Commonwealth level, they've only tested, I think, close to 1,200, and about 10% or 11% of those have come back positive. So I think that number's right around 115 or 130 right now in terms of positives for the Commonwealth of everything that they've tested. So, you know, I can't say that that's good or bad. I don't know.
There's a Commonwealth number.
Oh, yeah.
So for every positive case, is there a way to estimate then how many not, how many other cases are not being caught?
Yeah, I don't know that.
How many false negatives, I guess?
That's definitely not my expertise. But I think that's the kind of information people are looking for. It's like, you know, how often, you know, how many people, if there's 133, does that mean there's 333, or does that mean there's 1,000 people that have COVID that we don't know about? But I don't want to try to scare anybody and say, oh, you know, there's all these people walking around with COVID. When you look at those numbers, you know, around 10% or so, or a little more than 10% is testing positive out of the ones that they felt met the criteria. So it's difficult. I understand.
Yeah.
Well, also, do we know if the hospitals talk to each other? Like, there are hospitals within 50 miles of here that are going to face the same problem? Is someone or some agency coordinating that?
Yes. So I am part of a group that works on that on a regular basis. So we meet monthly. It's a task force level, eight counties, to discuss those type of things. Also, the Department of Health has a information sharing platform. I can look right now, if I dig out my computer, I can look on there and tell how many beds are available at Mount Ninni, how many are at Lewestown, how many are at Altoona. And that's, they can share that information on a regular basis. I can tell you from the preparedness level, I think overall, and I don't want to slight anybody, but the hospitals have it together better than probably a lot. They do a lot more information sharing and planning than a lot of other groups. So, you know, just from my standpoint, my years of emergency services, I'm not insecure about our hospitals and our healthcare system. Can it be overwhelmed? Certainly. But that's not my first worry, you know, when I think about that.
Well, it's good to know, actually.
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Appreciate it. And, you know, anything that comes up, get it to Doug. I'll certainly help you out.
Yeah, we've already had several conversations back and forth about this and that.
Get some rest, too.
Okay, next item is next steps.
Yeah, the one thing we need to have a little bit of discussion about is we do have a meeting scheduled for next Wednesday. There's one very important item, that's the board to discuss how they're going to choose to fill the vacancy that will be created by Dr. Buckland's resignation. I think that's probably the most critical thing. And then there's a couple of land development plans that are on that agenda. Those are the main action items. The other stuff, I'm either going to delay for a future meeting or give you written updates, or we'll try to put them into a consent agenda. We'll try to get the meeting down to, you know, just the essential items. But I would ask if maybe you think about changing the time, 7:00 PM. We'll have a lot of staff here and everything. If we could move it up a little bit, that would, I think, help everybody a little bit. But again, back to the board for that decision.
What time do you suggest?
Five would probably work fairly well. We'd probably be out of here by 6:30 or seven.
Sure.
I'm moved that the next meeting be scheduled for 5:00 PM.
Okay.
Second.
Actually, it's a work session.
Okay, second, we schedule the March, was it, March 25th?
Yeah.
Board meeting for 5:00 PM. Any discussion?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous.
Is the COG Executive, the General Forum still happening on Monday?
No.
It's not. Did I get an email about that?
The executive committee is charged with doing everything that the forum had done, including finance and everything else.
Got it. Thanks.
So we, there is a planning commission meeting scheduled for April 6. At this point, we don't have any action items. We may get one or two, but if we don't have any action items for planning commission, we'll go ahead and cancel that meeting, too. Unfortunately, if they would like affordable housing and stuff, I think they're just going to have to wait a while.
The next item says continuity of services?
I think we've talked about that pretty much tonight, unless you have any other questions.
Well, this is in that category. Are there any things or projects that we should be deferring?
We've already done that. There was a culvert replacement project on Julian, and we've, we were going to take bids here at the end of the month. We've canceled that. There's a couple of things that are in process. The bike way on Valley Vista, at this point, there's no prohibition against moving that forward. It's been let. Contractors started cutting trees, so we're going to move forward on that until told not to. And our traffic signal project on Valley Vista, which is mostly will take place inside the controller boxes, is moving forward. Other things, most other things, other things are going to get delayed at this point. So we talked about doing some budget stress scenarios. We're right into it right now. So one of the outcomes of that is you start delaying capital stuff. We'll just have to wait and see. We're going to do some work. The road crew will continue doing prep work for overlays, but whether we let a contract this fall or not remains to be seen. We may end up, I said, don't do anything that we can't live with over the winter. We may end up doing two overlay contracts next year to catch up, one in spring, one in fall. So we're looking at every project like that and seeing, you know, pretty much if it's not essential, not safety-related, it's probably going to get deferred and delayed at this point. Larry's going to start keeping a close eye on revenues. We're getting in real estate revenues right now. The discount period runs through the end of April, so that's when we get the majority, and we'll keep an eye on that. We're expecting earned income tax revenues to probably to be down.
Any other questions or comments on the board? Betsy?
No. Sorry, I had a little bit of trouble following that part. No, I didn't have any...
Sorry.
I wrote down to ask questions when I come back.
Okay, yeah, just, or you can call me, Betsy, and I can go over all that with you later if you'd like.
I have a minor question that I don't want to bring up in the meeting. I'm just going to check with you and Larry about some wording in the state law. We don't have public presence, so we don't have any public comments. Is there any other business?
No, sir.
If not, I'll close the work meeting, and we'll see you everyone next week.